... and will lead to a leaner council which costs less than what?
Counselor, I claim.
Thank you. Every morning when we went to work, outside Reading Station, I see a number of people huddled puddles in doorways, some sleeping, some begging, and some wandering around with a number of bags, looking as if they've been out all night. To my on-train guide, the number of homeless appears to be increasing, and clearly this problem isn't going to stop at the Borough boundary. Police could be executive member responsible, advised what trends we're seeing in the number of people presenting as being homeless across Wokingham Borough over the recent three-year period.
Thank you, Counselor, thanks for your question. Rough sleeping in our borough has been relatively high for the last two years. In December 2015, we undertook a full count and estimate, and we counted thirteen individuals as rough sleeping. On November the second, 2016, the date of the last count, the number was estimated to be eleven, even though only one person was found to be bedded down. A rough sleepers group meets monthly to talk about how to help each individual person, and there have been some successes in helping people get settled. Where there is a chaotic element to a person's life, this can mean the solutions are not always successful, and on occasions avenues for help are limited or have been exhausted. Homeless applications have increased from sixty-eight in 2013 to one hundred eighty-three in 2016, and which our duty to rehouse has increased from seventeen to ninety-seven. The main reasons are the end of the short-term holdtendency, parental eviction, and relationship breakdown. Wherever possible, we take steps for event homelessness, for example, if there has ever been a chance to negotiate with private landlord, or to offer assistance that may prevent eviction. Frequently, the reason for the end of a short-term tendency is that the landlord wishes to sell the property, and so there is little chance of prevention in these circumstances. The council's ongoing endeavours to provide affordable housing enables and facilitates by our approach the strategic development of locations and the work of Wokingham Borough Limited, is a further significant response to buy the council to meet its growing need of homes.
Do you have something else to add?
Thank you for that, I think they're clearly, again, shocking figures. I was going to ask, but what steps as a council are we taking to make sure, as far as we can, that these homeless can access the facilities that we enjoy, for example, decent medical care? Thank you.
We have a detailed homeless strategy. We've recently purchased a property which we're planning to use for short-term homelessness. We work very closely as a health and wellbeing board with all local medical centres within the Wokingham Borough, where we identify someone who is homeless, we try to put them in contact with the G P, and have been relatively successful.
Thank you. Counselor Shell, something to go ahead.
Malcolm, would you provide several examples each of W B C contracts on nature infrastructure and roads that would deliver on time and on budget, and when it goes wrong, will slip in time cables and cost overruns?
Thank you, Shell. We deliver many successful major infrastructure projects within the Highways and Transport Division, and to agreed timescales and budgets. However, as requested, here are a few that I confirm were delivered on time and within budget in the last financial year. Annual Carriageway and Resurfacing programming, seventeen road schemes, they were designed by W S P and delivered by Balport B T, and programmed and delivered throughout the 2016-17 year on time. The budget for these was two and a half million pounds, and we spent two and a half million pounds. The Loden Viaduct Phase Two, that was a complete engineering scheme including re-waterproofing of the bridge deck, strengthening concrete step barrier, and carriageway resurfacing, that was also designed by W S P and delivered by Balport B T, who are our contractors in this. It was programmed and delivered in the summer of 2016 to ensure completion before the new school term began in early September. That had a budget of one point one million. The spend was one point one five million, fifty thousand extra. However, that extra spend was due to some additional works order by the council, and not by any overruns. L E D street lighting contract in year one, four thousand one hundred and eighteen lanterns and one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one columns and lanterns replaced. They were delivered by, normally they're part of the Highways Limited as part of our contract, and they were programmed and delivered throughout 2016 and 17 on time. The budget for that was one point one million, and we spent one point zero million. Despite performing well, and due to the increasing volume of highways works forecast for the highway network over coming years, Highways and Transport Service have prioritised improved programming, coordination, and communication of all planned works on the network, and these improvements will be coming online over the next few months.
Counselor Shell, something to go ahead.
Yes. Why aren't we using penalty clauses in our contracts with developers and road maintenance companies, so when they don't deliver on time, they have to pay for it, rather than the residents having to pay for it with cost overruns?
In order to work on the road, the companies have to pay a fee to operate for a certain number of days, and there's a cost for that. The longer the time they spend, the more they pay, so it encourages them to work within time. If they exceed the time that they pay for, they have to come back and ask for another extension of paying on the fee, so they are only paying when they exceed the time.
Last question from Counselor Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. At the council meeting on February twenty-third, I asked the executive member for Highways the following question, which he chose not to answer, which we will answer at Paulie Angus. Why do you think there will be a saving of over a million pounds in the waste and recycling budget in 2019-20, especially as we would have to collect from many more houses by that time?
Thank you for that question. This is purely an aspirational target in year three of our medium-term financial plan, and we have no plans as yet for how this could be achieved. This figure, along with all other budget figures beyond 2017-18, will be reviewed as we set the budget for 2018-19.
Do you have a quick supplementary?
I don't have a supplementary. We've got some.
There's a committee meeting on ward matters. Anyone wish to say anything? Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Privileged to be first, thank you for that one. My question is for Angus Ross, the executive member for Environment. In my ward at Hawkedon, the areas next to the river Loden have suffered in the past from flooding. Can you assure me and the residents of Hawkedon there are adequate protections against such flooding in the future? Thank you.
Thank you for that one, Malcolm. The Environment Agency are currently conducting vegetation clearance and maintenance along the stretch of the river Loden nearest the Royal War, and this will continue over two months. Benefit to this will be the channel is clear and free of debris, so the river can flow naturally during storm conditions. Furthermore, the subs feature being implemented within the Hatch Farm Dairy site should provide some form of betterment for this area, and at the very least will not make the situation worse. We're also working with the Loden Catchment Partnership on a number of natural flood risk management projects to store water upstream and in irrigation areas, and this will hopefully have some net benefits for the whole of the Wokingham portion of the Loden. This work is upstream in Hampshire. I recall there's a number of drainage issues with Thames Water Infrastructure in your ward, and the Environment Agency, Thames Water and Wokingham as local flood authority are working well together, and we now have a dedicated Thames Water officer in our area. We're also clearing from C C D V surveying the various drains from and around the Showcase Cinema roundabout area, maybe just outside your ward, that can possibly raise the road level if we can show benefit from that without affecting flooding elsewhere. And finally, I'm pleased that a number of local residents have volunteered in your area as flood wardens, and these are helping us as eyes and ears at all times, but especially in times of drought.
Counselor Shell, something to go ahead.
Since we don't... Malcolm. Sorry, Malcolm. Since we own the land, we have the money for the Winness relief road, and the developers planning to finish their part of the Winness relief road this year, why haven't we already submitted the planning application for the council-owned part, the council-provided part of the Winness relief road, so the rest of the residents don't have to get stuck in tailbacks on the Reading Road on a regular basis, which I'm sure you can stop down, and almost everybody in this room is probably just stuck trying to get through to Winness Crossroads?
The question keeps coming up, doesn't it? Yes, and our various stages involved in building the Winness Relief Road and the connections on the Wokingham Road and the Northern Distributor Road, obviously a great deal of work has gone into this, and is still going into it, and they are looking at the most efficient way of providing it, that you don't have to do a job, and then a bit later you change a bit of it to modify it when the next stage comes along. And people aren't generally keen on having a major road job which finishes, and then six months later you have to close the road for another part of it. So they've been organising it such that it causes minimal inconvenience to motorists and the timescale, and attempting to align many of the jobs into a better pattern than it was originally, that's all it is. But the plan is that, the current plan, subject to all the usual caveats, is that the northern part, part of the Northern Distributor Road, and indeed the Winness Relief Road, are attempting to align around 2021, that's the current stage. We keep you advised of any other changes as well as arrived.
Counselor Paul, something to go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've had it raised by residents, as it has been often over the past years, about inconsiderate parking outside of schools, and in particular Loden Primary. Would the executive member for Highways be able to confirm that the new civil parking regime will be targeted to touch such trouble spots?
Yes, of course. At the moment, matters of on-street parking are handled by the local, by the Teletubby police. We don't have any responsibility for it, nor can we. However, we are applying for civil parking enforcement, C P E, and as I gave an answer earlier in this session, C P E is currently going forward, and we will hope to have it implemented in the last quarter of this year. When that comes along, we will be organising and having responsibility for parking controls and for breaches. And so where there are yellow lines, or markings, or anything outside schools which are supposed to prevent wrong parking, then C P E will be our responsibility, and they will be pursued and kept flowing much better. Obviously, on day one, when the system starts, if you don't already have yellow lines and all the extra things, the policing, whether it's done by the police or us, will be very different. But once you get restrictions, yellow lines, or any other regulations, and our digitalised maps will show you where they are, then C P E will cover it, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bright.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a question for Charlotte. Could you please explain why one point one hectares was a big enough size for the new primary school in Wareship Wheatfields in 2013? According to what happened at the exec meeting earlier this month, this was all written, is apparently not big enough for a new primary school at Chlandairies in 2017, despite the council having signed a legal agreement in 2014 which says that one point one hectares is what the council asked for specifically to put a school on at Chlandairies.
I can find out the detail for you, get back to you as to why that amount was asked for, and why it seems suspicious at the moment. If we've built a school on before, we can do it again, I'm sure.
Counselor Blueenthal.
Thank you. My question is to the deputy executive member for Environment. If you take a stroll around South Lake after rain, it's totally ruined if you go around Linden Road End, because there are huge puddles that form, and indeed they're a lot like mini lakes. Can you explain what the council's doing to address this issue?
Counselor Blueenthal, thank you for that question from your ward. The work to repair the large puddles was planned a little while ago. Both Counselor Ross and I took a walk around this very peaceful lake in your ward, and we do agree that once the small puddles are great fun for the little ones in their weddings, when they enjoy jumping in and out of those little puddles, but the larger puddles do present a problem after a very heavy rainfall. But I'm pleased to inform you that the work to repair the large puddles started yesterday. Perhaps we could take a walk next week to...
It's not going to be interesting.
I just heard the most effective public in the public. Counselor Ferris.
Yes, my question was for Paulie, that is for Alison. We did not see anything in the budget plan for the new library facility in Twyford, and the executive member of the line had updated particularly reference funding.
Yeah, we will certainly provide you with that.
Counselor Holthwaite, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Really, my question's probably been answered actually, but it was why I have the capital sums for the Winness Relief Road, which appeared in last year's M T F P, and has suddenly disappeared from this year's M T F P, but I guess it's because you just got to build the road.
Yes, the figure was in 2016-17. It doesn't show in the current one, because although the money was put in, it hasn't yet been used, and so it just carries forward. It doesn't show as it carries forward, but it's already allowed for. So it hasn't been cancelled, it's in there, there's money for the budget, they are working towards it, and are working on the schedules that we've mentioned.
Counselor Young, something to go ahead.
Hi there. Recently, we were informed that the service house for crossing patrol on Edinburgh Road was possibly going to be ruined. The area had possibly two blocks of both Edinburgh Infants Junior's, Edinburgh Secondary, and two separate preschools. We are also expected to be able to send home students to the maximum degree of vulnerability on the edge of this area. At the time, the Wokingham Borough Council confirmed money-to-pay contract was taken out in the original six hundred and twenty pounds per day, which more exceeds the summer in the average school cross patrol. Can I ask if we really do our priorities right, and it comes to saving money, especially when we're pretty much short in our budget?
My turn again. Yes, you know that... You know that we have published what our thoughts are on this. There are areas where we already have a crossing control of some sort, whether it's a zebra crossing or push-button pedestrian crossing, and that is quite obviously a fairly safe crossing, now thousands of them all over the country. Unless you're saying that a pedestrian crossing is not safe, in which case we've got a problem all over the country. They are safe crossings. If you then got a crossing controller at the same place, that's a double safe standard. It might be quite nice for all to say, yes, we can have two, but we can't. We have very tight controls on the money, and for most of the evening, and we can't really therefore justify having two safe methods in one location instead of one. So we're not withdrawing a safe facility for crossing at all, we're simply adjusting the level of contribution to any one of those double standards, double safe standards.
Counselor Jorgensen, please.
Thank you very much. My question is for the leader of the council. In the latest newsletter, the Libbets have said in bold headline, "The Future of Cheltenham Park Is In Doubt". Please, will you tell me if this is true?
Thank you, Counselor Jorgensen, for your question. A piece of land next to the park owned by the council, widely known as Area D D, has always been earmarked for development and is being assessed for suitability for building houses or shelter for accommodation. To be absolutely crystal clear, any encroachment onto Cheltenham Park would be unacceptable to me as leader.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is for Counselor Ross. What measures have you put in place to ensure that the debacle around grass cutting that happened in Hawkedon Ward and throughout the Borough last spring will not be repeated in 2017? What is being done differently this year?
I did inform council that last year there was a coincidence of four weeks between the old and new contract when the grass was being cut, and that happened, chance to be a period when the grass was growing out of control. This year, the contractor is well into the routines of cutting grass. We have confidence, we're working very closely with the contractor, and I would not anticipate any issues this year. We've also, last year, took up a lot of consultation and conversations with both members and residents in areas where there was doubt about cutting the grass, and I think we've now had what I would say is a stable situation, though it will never please all people all the time.
Counselor Holthwaite, please.
Thank you. Mine's a ward question for the executive member for Education. I've been made aware by a Hawkedon resident of a school in Reading which their child attends, has been hit by a fallback by Reading Borough Council of tens of thousands of pounds due to R B C claiming they've made mistakes in calculating their payments. To settle this, R B C withheld school's entire monthly payment, which is multiples of the amount in dispute, and caused issues with school payroll due to no warning coming from R B C, and no attempt to discuss the issue before withholding payment. I'm sure the executive member agrees that this exposes pupils to unnecessary and preventable problems, but the executive member confirmed the process for settling under overpayments with Wokingham Schools, and that they would give warning before changing any agreement at agreed payments to the school.
Thank you, Counselor Holthwaite, for your question. All councils and schools face financial difficulties, as we discussed this evening extensively, and some more than others. And whilst it would be difficult to make comment from the outside on how others address these issues, some may take a very difficult approach to us, read what we may into that particular comment. For Wokingham, we have worked hard to ensure that whatever difficulties this council faces, any effect on schools is absolutely minimal. In fact, this council has increased its investment in teams supporting schools for 2017 and 18. We have worked hard to make sure that Wokingham Schools get the best deal in the National Review of Schools Funding. We want school budgets to be fair and to be safe, so that they can continue to manage to do what they do. And Wokingham Schools are run very well. Ofsted inspectors say that, we know it, and our school staff live and breathe it every single day, for the sake of our children and for our young people. Any problem in a partnership like ours with schools is dealt with in effective communication, and very importantly, honesty as well. We have transparent systems, and we operate through effective schools forum, where head teachers and governors make decisions together through us. Admittedly, there are some tough decisions, but we face those head-on with clarity and shared purpose. Figures from the National Education Funding Agency have changed mid-year historically, and this is always challenging. But we have dealt with that in the past without dramatic effect to schools, so if there were any questions of under or over allocations, if it ever happened, we would rely on our tested principles of transparency, effective communication, and working in partnership, and we'll get there in the end. We're here to get the best deal for our children and young people in our classrooms, in our playgrounds, and of course at home.
Are there any more questions for members on ward matters that we missed anybody? Sorry.
Could I raise up in order four to twelve M and ask a meeting to extend by an additional half hour after ten?
Do you have a second, everyone? Counselor Ferris? We have to put that to the vote. All those in favour of extending the meeting? All those who are yes? The proposal is lost on the thread.
Please be advised, I am withdrawing motion, withdrawing motion three nine two, and we will know that we submitted.
In that case, we'll move on to three nine three. Counselor Pitts, do you wish to move this motion?
Right. Simon Shaw. Sorry, I had colts. Sorry. Can we take the motion as ready? Mr Mayor?
Yes, we can. Sorry, yes, we can. We have a second, everyone. We've wanted you two second there. Counselor Ferris, thank you. Put the motion to the vote. Anyone wish to debate it? So I call it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to propose an amendment to that explicit motion as follows. Let me add an additional paragraph at the end to say, this council also resolves that the matter should be referred to the Constitution Review Working Group to review in more detail and to recommend a way forward, and that the proposer and the secondor of the motion should be invited to provide more detail on their view of the practical implications of this change.
Do you have a second, everyone? Counselor Jorgensen, yours to say?
Yes, just very briefly. This is clearly an important topic, and I would like us to consider it carefully. Keep actually given the time of night, and not to do anything in haste. So I therefore support referring this matter to the Constitution Review Working Group, so that they can consider the issues, discuss the options, and bring forward the proposal for consideration.
Counselor Pitts.
Thank you. At present, the process for appointing backbench members to the committee, a scrutiny committee, is that group leaders do this, with majority group leader appointed most within the political balance.
Ian, can I ask you if you accept the amendment?
Sorry, yeah, sorry, yeah. Whilst I certainly intended it went to a backbench committee, because I would prefer that it went to an all-party group of people who clearly want this to happen, because they're not pushing. Actually, no. Actually, no, it's the wrong group. Thank you.
Can I ask the speakers to debate the amendment, please, for that accepted? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Councilor Hallisong.
Thank you. As a proposer, as my mic like to speak, I've no strong feelings either for or against this motion in itself. Sorry, I've lost my bottle of the air. I've no strong feelings either for or against this motion in itself, but I can foresee some logistical problems. It's the council that makes the appointments, the individual groups decide who they're going to nominate, but this proposal will be very difficult to enact within our constitution. The executive members are not appointed until the annual council, so who would be excluded from the process? The old executive? Yet they might no longer be on the executive, and therefore should not be excluded. What about if we have a hung council? For better or worse, we tend to vote for those from our own party. Most things in the constitution are not party-specific, and in the case of a hung council, the mayor would be the person to decide who would be appointed. What about timing? Would we only be able to appoint scrutiny after the annual council, since the executive members who could not vote are not formally confirmed until then? Would there be a secret ballot? There are a lot of questions that still need answering before we can vote on the motion as it stands. Therefore, Constitution Working Group needs to untangle some of these questions and determine the feasibility before we can logically even consider the proposal.
Thank you. Councilor Shep, do you have your shell?
I do believe this is trying to kick it into the long grass unfortunately, rather than actually dealing with it. Councilor Pittick has a very good motion that could be possibly debated, and he has also suggested where the committee should be rather than Constitutional Working Group. And I think that would be a much better idea, rather than kicking it to the long grass. The government is looking into ways that overview and scrutiny can be more effective to actually scrutinise the executive rather than just rubber stamping them, and I believe that would be a good idea.
Thank you, Councilor Jorgensen. Do you wish to speak on? Thank you. Councilor Pitts, you?
Yes, thank you. The reason why I don't think it should be the Constitutional Working Group is because there are a number of people on there who, frankly, outside this meeting have already said they don't want it. I would prefer it went to an all-party working group of people who actually would like this to take place and therefore are in a better frame of mind to actually find the right way of doing it.
Can I, can I ask?
It's me to sum up, isn't it? It's on the amendment still.
Can I ask for a chaplaincy on those wishing to accept the amendment, please? Those against?
Right, the amended motion is, Whitehall requires that where the executive system is used, each executive member shall be subject to a scrutiny committee. This council believes that it is essential to demonstrate avoidance of clear conflicts of interest and over-centralisation and power for patronage provided by the special responsibility allowed system. Therefore, the council leader who appoints executive members and subjects executive members themselves should in no way be involved in the pre-council or council processes used to appoint members to scrutiny in audit committees, non-chairs and vice-chairs of such. This council resolves that non-executive members themselves shall pre-appoint members to scrutiny in audit committees, ensuring political balance, and the members of each committee shall themselves pre-appoint their own chair and vice-chair with these names then being sent to council for formal appointment, with the executive members declaring an interest and abstaining in the vote. This council also resolves that the matter should be referred to the Constitution Review Working Group for reviewing in more detail and to recommend a way forward, and that the proposer and the second of the motion should be invited to provide more detail on their view of the practical implications of this change.
That's it, council, and we'll bridge the watching hour. Thank you very much, beautiful day. Councilor.
Thirty seconds?
About one minute.
Cool, okay. Full briefing will be given to the press, you can read that next week. Well, the greatest person in the sector yourself, this is the mayor, and indeed some of my colleagues in the Conservative group, one, within which you affect, I resign from the Conservative group. Two, in a few minutes, I will send an email resigning from the Conservative Party. Three, I am now looking across the chamber to join the Liberal Democrats.